Are you ready?
I'm by the time I was.
Do anything.
Have to patch everything?
Yeah, why? We're seeing a common council on Wednesday. Uh, may.
Ben Silverman.
President.
Thompson here. Ben Blorco.
Here.
Elkin.
Here.
Plano.
Here.
Commander.
Yeah.
President. And now. Then. Preston, how about you?
I believe in the United States of America. As the Constitution stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the. On the comment.
I want you to remember that Friday, I don't know if he's been picked up. And that was Friday evening. So. Get our names out there.
Hey, are you going to do Christmas, you know?
I think. If you're listening, please know that we have another map at this week. It's all about lakes.
Yeah. Um. Further public comment. Our agenda will go through. Last couple meetings. Uh, item number two is James Hanky's access agreement for the city dog park property. At that being, what? Um. So doing, but I thought the document was pretty self explanatory. Yep.
I think between Paul and I two are competing. And it was like, if you want.
Please.
You can still.
Sorry, Paul. We should, we should name the shirt now, right?
Yeah. Also, Mayor.
Yes.
So you, you wanna hear about the.
Let's talk about.
New Economic Development Associates, um. Our head court in the south, uh, southern Minnesota. Uh, been around a while as a cooperative for nonprofit. They, um. Last summer, um, Steve Yon with Menom West, Terry Howar, Polk County D C approached me. Uh, and I talked about this organization and that they were interested in coming to Amory, looking at Amory. With the idea of developing housing until that point in time, they had not done a lot with housing. They, if you go to their website, they offer everything from. Uh. Guiding communities and a number of communities, uh, again, in southern Minnesota, uh, on. Everything from city administration to projects to, I mean, you basically knew that they've kind of done it. But they wanted to get into housing a little bit, and so they talked to us and we met with them last fall. But, uh, to, yep. Oh, good, good. Well, let's let him take over and we can kind of. So that's a little bit of the history of where we, how we got where we are today. Thank you.
Beyond.
Please ask if you can hear you.
Yes. Can't hear me.
Am I operating under the sneaking suspicion that you guys are waiting for me to talk?
Yes, well, uh, yes, unfortunately.
Which you kind of hear James.
Hey, I, I really apologize. I just hopped onto the meeting, so I caught the last about half a sentence that Paul shared and. Wasn't sure if you guys were waiting for me or not, but, um. So I, I apologize for the confusion there and, and thank you for accommodating this. Um, I'd much rather be there in person, but, uh. I did have an event all day today, uh, up in Ashland and. Um, I, I haven't invented time travel yet, so I'm not, uh, not able to be there in person. So. Basically, um, you know, to, I'll, I'll provide a little bit of background on myself and in our organization. Um. My name is James Hanky. I live in, uh, I live in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. Um, I'm a, uh, I'm the Vice President of Wisconsin Operations for SEDA. SEDA is an acronym for Community and Economic Development Associates. Um, we are a thirty-eight-year-old organization, um, founded out of Minnesota. And, uh, you know, basically our, our organization does a, a range of things. Um, you know, but our primary focus is working in rural communities. Um. So our, our primary, our bread and butter is really providing. Local staff capacity to rural communities on more of a part-time basis. Um, we also do a lot of grant writing, grant administration. Um, we do some planning work. Uh, we do a lot of rural business innovation work. And, uh, we also recently have been getting into doing housing development within rural communities. Um, and, uh, you know, so the, the, basically the, the piece of material that I provided for you today. Um. Is the, the request to the, the City of Amory. That we receive access, um, to the dog park property. Um, as we continue to do our due diligence on and, and evaluate. A workforce housing multifamily development. Um, uh, on the property itself and. You know, as you, as you look at the conceptual site plan that, that we've established for the property, what you see is. We're contemplating a initial housing unit. Um, that would be approximately forty-two to forty-four. Uh, one bedroom and two-bedroom housing units. The building is podium style, um, so the main floor is actually parking underground, um, you know, we're living where we live. It's not exactly pleasant to be walking out of doors to, you know, get to your car. In certain times of the year, so we're looking at the underground parking, three stories of housing above that. Um, the request for access really revolves around the need for us to. You know, go in and do some additional due diligence on the property, evaluating soil conditions. Um, delineating the existing wetlands that are on the property to ensure that the design isn't impacting those wetlands. Um, you know, doing some additional due diligence relative to the infrastructure extending, you know, from the street into the property. Um, you know, and, and that's our request, so. We would, we would basically be asking for, uh, the, the city council's acceptance. Of the, uh, the access agreement. We did have an attorney. Um, you know, from a little bit north of you, go ahead and, and draft that. I initially went to a friend of mine who, uh, was an attorney who actually works for. The city's firm, so we had a conflict of interest there. He was nice enough to, uh, you know, give me, uh, give me, uh, a contact. For a, a local attorney out of luck who, who did draft the, the access agreement. Um. You know, the reason we're doing access agreement versus a purchase agreement is we, we really feel it's important, uh. Um. You know, do that additional due diligence before we make a determination on whether or not we want to purchase the property. Um, and then lastly, I think in my letter, I did indicate that we, we acknowledge that, that this property is, is currently the community's dog park. Um, and we know that the land use that we're proposing isn't compatible with that. So, you know, the, I think there are a couple of questions that will come along with this that, that of course the community needs to have a discussion around and. One of those is whether or not a dog park is the best and highest use of that property and. You know, whether that's something that needs to be relocated or, you know, moved to another place or, you know, maybe doesn't exist. I don't know the answer to that question. Um, you know, obviously, if we're, if we're looking at, at a project of this nature, um. The property would need to be rezoned and. We're interested in a, in a signal from the community that that's something they're interested in doing in conjunction with a development agreement. As we were to look and at going forward with the property. So I, I hope this has been a helpful summary and, and did just want to see if there were any questions of me at this point in time.
Question, um, I spoke with Patty about this a little bit earlier this week. I am part of a. Currently focused on finding ways to improve childcare in the area, and this piece of property has been looked at as a potential site for that. Uh, and she said that she had spoken to you about potentially incorporating the two together on this piece of property. Can you speak to? What your thoughts are on that?
Yeah, uh, and I appreciate that question and, and honestly, you're, you're not the first person from Amory who's, who's talked to me about that. Um. You know, Paul in particular brought that up in, in one of the meetings that, uh, that I had with him and. You know, I'll, I'll preface all of this by saying that, you know, I, I really appreciate both Paul and Patty have been. You know, incredibly helpful to us in terms of, of providing advice and coaching and. Um, you know, when that issue came up, I, you know, I pointed out to Paul that. You know, one of the, if you look at the site plan that we have, we're, we're calling for. You know, a, a forty-two to forty-four unit. Um, apartment building on the north side of that parcel. And then we also identify a second potential building on the south side as a future development. Um, I'm not necessarily convinced that that needs to be a housing development. Um. And frankly, from a, you know, from a, a developer perspective. You know, one of the, the more attractive elements of that property. Is its proximity to the schools, its proximity to your major employers, its proximity to your hospital. And frankly, if we were to add its proximity to a childcare facility. By placing one on the south side, we would certainly be open to that. Um, we are, we are not, you know, we, we've evaluated and, and I'm working with a variety of communities on. Different healthcare, or I'm sorry, different childcare issues. We are, we are not a childcare developer. Um, you know, but we are open to a variety of different development options and would welcome. Being a part of the solution that would drive additional daycare into Amory, if, if that's something the community is desirous of.
Thank you. Um, just speaking to the rest of the council, I think this is a really important piece to look at as we're making this decision, just because we have. Housing that's coming in, which is. Fantastic, but we still don't have a solution. As a young parent. If I was looking to move to a community. It doesn't look very attractive for that piece. Because there's nowhere to send. So I, I would be very cautious to just completely remove that out. For us here.
So could I, may I, may I add one additional element to that? Um. If, if your interest is childcare on this property or a portion of this property. Um, I think providing us with an access agreement. And garnering information relative to the delineation of the wetlands relative to soil conditions on the property. Are going to be very beneficial to whether it's us or whether it's a. Childcare developer that was looking at a parcel on the property and, you know, we're, we're an open book, so we're gonna share. You know, all of the technical geotechnical information that we get, you know, with Patty and with you as the community going forward.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, sure. Negative in. Let us, you know, exploratory. Um, activity take place because it, it benefits us, who, as you said. Sharing that information, identifying where the wetland starts. What's buildable, what's not buildable. On that acreage. Um, it's an advantage to not just you, but to us going forward, so. They move.
And one more thing, we should talk about the fact that we're paying for all of us too, so the citizens have to pay for any of the costs.
Correct, yeah. Uh, it's our due diligence and we would, we're, we're responsible for the cost attributable to that due diligence. Um, we've hired a, a, a architectural firm out of Hudson called Studio EA. Um, and then Studio EA carries the site civil and the frankly, the structural engineering. For the project, so they'll be identifying a local site civil firm. Who will, uh, you know, go ahead and, and do that due diligence on our behalf. Um, we also, and I think I did outline it in the letter, we've hired a, a construction management firm. Um, you know, to help us with cost control during, you know, as we advance the design on the project and. You know, we'll, we'll go ahead and, and be working with them on, on this process as well.
Okay.
I think it would be absolutely positive. Sustenance of it.
Which that's benefit to.
Yes, and, and. No obligation, it's just.
Access.
Yeah, access. I'd second. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the SEDA access agreement for the dog park property. Platoon from some, I was excited, this is a dog park. There's some property that the city owns, but. We're in further discussion.
Yeah, I just have a question. I was just wondering. It's a courtesy. Park or if this is. If you can hear of it or.
I didn't say that to, uh. Man, we heard the motion that created that.
Yeah.
And discussion with them. Several years ago. Discussion has always been if the problem came up for a higher, higher value sage. Dog park would be there, uh. However, we are committed, committed at that time. The dog park to. Else it's appropriate or, and. It's, uh. Talked about, but there's. It's premature to talk, to move it.
One more thing, there is no dog park committee anymore. They completely use their dogs. I tried to get help with different. There's nobody's dog.
Yeah. So. Uh, so I think it's very, it's extremely valuable. We, we don't, I think we've, many have committed to. The dog park, having a dog park. It's another part of the city, but it's used. Really, yeah. Lots of times well into the evening. And, uh, I think. Personally, I'm committed to having that. But, uh, probably.
Great to throw in something too, as we're also putting down a plan commission, we'll be talking about that just kind of. Give your thoughts as far as. Pushing for dog parks.
So I don't, I don't see any impediment to. Be basically committed to that verbally. It's some time ago. See the reason that it wouldn't.
Well, and I, you know, I, I. Think that it will be reassuring. For people to hear that.
Totally. Those comments. Not. All favor. Approving the access agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Just. Forward. Thanks, James.
Thank you all very much. Um, I'm sorry again that I couldn't be there in person and, uh. Yeah, I wish you well with the remainder of the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, James.
Item number three, ordinance eleven twenty twenty four, chapter three thirty-eight taxi cabins. It's an ordinance approving. Or putting some groundwork down for. Taxi cab. Hoser.
Minus anything, I really want to give you some starting guidelines.
Managed. Actually, and I know there's work going on. Um, maybe sometime before fruition, but this is a step one. They have something in place for that, so. A motion to accept that. Any questions? I have one question about that. See, that was, uh. Oh, I'm under the first, uh. Oh, under license required, um. I may just be, I don't understand exactly how, but I, but there'll be something there that says. You bring someone into town from a taxi. This is.
Outside of the, and I.
There's shouldn't be language. Says, you're, you're coming in from the Richmond in the taxi, we don't have, you don't have to stop at the city limits. Which under arrest. Places I consider that. Do you think, you think that's valid?
With what you've said, I think there needs to be.
It's just, just clarify is, uh. Under exempting. Exempt. The, under taxi cab, it says, um, except, excepting such vehicles commonly known as rent-a-cars. Aborting ve- vehicles operated as carpools. Maybe we could add. Outside. These. So it's sent to a while.
Other rides. City limits or. Cause we do have, um, like. And there's like Northwestern's location operates within our city limits. And that's still operators, so we just don't.
When I see yellow cabs comes through, tell them. Probably in the summertime.
We can add those.
Just then I would be. Approve.
So. Clear by. And so it would read an exempting vehicles operated as carpools and other rights of entering city limits.
I've got you.
That's. I'm hoping to approve. Ordinance twelve twenty twenty four, chapter fourteen six, nope, 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 eleven twenty twenty four, chapters three thirty, taxi cabs as. I'm in the.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded to adopt ordinance eleven twenty twenty four as. Questions.
Um. I don't know if this happens. So this is something separate that. That type of.
Yeah. Well. Only from the, from. It's from with a long Uber driver that come into Amory without, but it would not allow them. For that. Saying anyone would. Will have to meet that.
Who's in the audio? Suppitating it?
Yeah, this is the groundwork to try to get that from.
Yes.
Well, let's see if we have any input or excuse that the access service would turn.
That's later diet in there. The enterprise.
Well, and it's also indicated that. It hasn't been a fee. To get a license to operate in Amory has been established. So that's something that we'll discuss when we discuss the fees, schedules, okay? Yeah.
I'm thinking, so now I'm an Uber driver. And I get a call and pick somebody up and I need a license.
So found as a. Right.
But. We're not adding. No, cause there are exterior services coming on time basis.
I'll talk to somebody that wants to start one.
Where do I discuss? Amory, same if I was saying I. I'm opposed. Item number four, ordinance twelve twenty twenty four, Airport Commission, and I'll talk about this in a minute. Um. We have discussed this already. For two, but the Airport Commission. Charter, if you will. Those are basically Airport Commission members have to be. City of Amory.
That is, we use.
Have a lot of pilots, City of Amory. We don't have so many. That are here are get.
Well.
Like to add, just change the, uh, the membership. Away, along one member. Side of the City of Amory. Didn't. Specify where that member would come from. The Amory area. But it would be someone who basically has either. But or has just in Amory. Uh, still follow the same. To have the Airport Commission. It's a really changes really. We're just the one. Presiding here. A motion is made and seconded to, uh, adopt ordinance twelve twenty twenty four regarding the Airport Commission. Further discussion. They will say aye.
Aye.
Good. Item five, hangar lease for lot F four. For a standard, uh. Airport lease. Buying. For this previously. Oh, I would. I was moving through hangar lease for lot F four.
Second then.
It was made and seconded to approve the hangar lease for lot F four. And that. Fire here. Matthew Austin. I love that. Public. I guess. Say aye. Six, hangar lease for lot G three. This involves a new. It's a. This is out there, right? There. And everything like that. Randy Hammond is, uh, invested in building. Fifty by fifty.
He had one come through at the last meeting, no longer wants to build that one, he wants to build this one instead, he told me.
It's, it's ten feet. Or, or smaller than, uh, ten by ten's smaller than. Last one, the other one was sixty by sixty on a bigger lot. And. He came back and said, can I build a fifty by fifty airport and said, no, you can't. He came back and said, can I build a fifty by fifty airport and said, no, you can't. Eyes, so this is the lease, so he can begin building on a G three currently. Approving at least for lot G three. Which is made in second to approve the hangar lease for lot G three, any further discussion? So order number seven. Shooting for six tonight, guys. And which one used permit for the Amory School District Campus, just to set it out. This, uh, this was, uh. Planning Commission, uh, this week. Approved by the planning commission to recommend that. And that was primarily because we never had a. Were recommended, we approved this.
Well, district camp.
Well, the the upshot is really that it's it's sort of a pro form. This before. Um, and there's no record of. conditional use in place because it's not, it's own residential, but it's a. Improved conditional use at the school. So in order for them to be. Eyes dotted and. Have this on file. Allows them also to have the. Do the things that they're gonna be doing, they're swapping the, the, all things moving. And other things like that, but that gives them.
So made the second to approve the conditional use permit for the New School District Campus. Further discussion? They were say I?
All right, hello, everybody. Uh, for those of you don't know me, I'm Dan Kegley, uh, co-owner of R M Inspecting, and so I'll give you kind of an annual report here. Um, in twenty twenty three, we issued seventy three permits. Um, and the valuation of all those permits added up to be thirty two million, seven hundred and ninety one dollars. So a lot of, uh, building projects, uh, that were done in in that were issued in twenty twenty three, we're still doing inspections, obviously, and things like that over at the school. Uh, for those types of things. Um, and then obviously, the report also shows some of the prior or previous twenty twenty three permits that are still open and still. Uh, either active permits and things are happening, or there's a few items that are still left to be done with those particular, uh, items there. So our, uh, business has grown a little bit. Um, we currently have hired. Some people on, we now have nine staff members in our office now. Uh, we have an assistant manager and the manager, Dawn's the manager and co-owner. And myself and, um, we have a full staff, if you will. Um, we picked up, uh, Bayfield County, we have seven municipalities up in Bayfield County, so we've kind of grown. Nor in the northern area there, so we're kind of growing our business in that way and hiring purple people to, uh, to to serve, serve in that capacity. Um, which is great. Let's see here, I think, um. Uh, the next thing, I guess I had a report on was for in the city here, um, there are, uh. Four buildings, uh, that are kind of in need of compliance, two of them need council action. Uh, on those things, one of them is at one forty two Lake Street. Um, I have been in communication with the owner there, um, after some consults with myself, uh, Chief Peters and, um. Uh, legal, uh, we have had some headway there, so, uh, some action is gonna happen now, uh, with, um. Removing the structures that were illegally put in the backyard and those kinds of things, we're currently working with the owner on that right now. Um, to make that happen as well as getting some other demo permits and things like that with inspections to be done shortly on. On one forty two Lake Street, so there's some activity there and hopefully we'll get that, uh, in compliance soon. Uh, the next item is on the list, there is one, uh, four eighty eight Minneapolis Avenue, that's right across the street from the VFW. It's an old white house kind of buried in the trees, there's no driveway or access to it right now. Looks like it's been abandoned for years, um, it's dilapidated to the point, we did some inspections. Um, I did, uh, provide a report that just kind of shows you the dilapitation of it. Um, so it's my recommendation that we classify it as an unsafe building per your ordinance, um, one ninety three dash eight. Um, and then by your orders, we can then go after. We can pursue the owner to either raise the building or do something with the building, um, if there is an owner, so we have to try to track down the owner in that. Particular case, but it gives us some marching orders as to what to do next with that particular property.
That one will tell the law along, it's the delinquent taxes on it. So. Taxes. They have a need on it, in other words. What I'm terribly interested in is having a store like we had. Better and and around the street. Ten years before we just lit the bullet and. Cause we're not getting any tax revenue out of it. The appropriate thing to do is. Just. Do you guys practice on the last building? Learn the planes? Yeah, okay, this one probably is.
It it probably for for his purposes, it might be a good option, I would recommend you take a look at it, uh. To see if that might be an option, if you want to go down that type of path for training and that kind of thing, but.
Often getting rid of it. They're not, they're not going to hold with it.
Yeah, as you can see in the pictures, it's.
There's no maybe show it, I'm just, it's just a place for virements.
Exactly, so.
Well, with that said, don't we have to do our due diligence? Attempt to contact the last known owner.
Asking for is, if we do, uh, if if the council deems it unsafe, then my next step would be to try to reach out to the owner. And have them pursue per the ordinance, either raising it or fixing it, whatever.
Specific time, excuse me, time limit that they have to respond to you, and if there's no response at that point in time, further action will be taken.
Normally, normally the state allows thirty days for those types of actions, so we can do that, and we can ask legal on that to confirm we're doing the right thing. Uh, but we we can pursue that for sure, and then I can get with Jeff on who the previous owners were and that kind of thing, so we can get the right communication going.
Okay, do you want to act on that one, see if you can do that?
So we do need to deem it as an unsafe building per one ninety three dash eight.
I will, that's the property. Wisconsin, right?
That's our best understanding from the GIS map.
Moving to that. To cleanse an unsafe building.
You know, second down motion.
Motion made in second that the. As unsafe and unfit. The only contact and.
Either removal or the option to repair at their cost, and we'd have a timeline and and I'd have, he'd have to get a permit and we would follow that. Standard building permit process for that.
And should we put a thirty day time on his?
That would be my recommendation, yeah. As upon notice, I can give them thirty, and once that written notice is given to whoever we find out the owner is. We can give them that thirty days and to respond. Uh, the next, uh, one is, uh, located at eight eleven. Uh, Wisconsin Avenue, I apologize, the four eighty eight, uh, Minneapolis is the one next to the school, I misspoke there, but. Four eighty eight Minneapolis is the one directly across from the elementary school, I think they just have house wrap all the way around it right now. So the one we just talked about, the property was was eight eleven Wisconsin Avenue.
No, I said, that's, that's what I said.
Yep.
Clarification.
Clarifying, then four eighty eight Minneapolis Avenue is that white house across from the elementary school. Um, we've, uh, they did get a demo permit and we did do a demo inspection, which you have some pictures of. You can see that the whole perimeter, uh, foundation wall is heaving in. Um, and then they did hire a contractor to come in, uh, and do some engineering, uh, reinforcement of the walls and those kinds of things. Um, but I I still feel that we should deem it unsafe at this point, so that. Uh, if the owner decides not to pursue it any further, we we have action to take on that order than. To either make it safe or or raise the property kind of thing with that action. Property, if you haven't owned the property, he is currently, um, trying to basically, uh. Remodel the whole unit and bring it back into a sellable state to to resell it, a flipper's basically purchased it out of O'Clare, I believe, out of O'Clare. Um, and we have a permit from that person as well. Um, and then we have another permit from the company that came in and did the work already for trying to reinforce the walls. Um, and I just happened to look at it just, uh, yesterday, I believe it was, and, um. So it does have a state, Wisconsin State Engineer stamp on it, if it's installed according to the engineer's specifications. And the pictures you see actually show those braces already in there, uh, which is not what the engineer has in his drawings. So there's some more work that the owner would have to do to work with that engineer to. At least provide to me that ensuring that it's safe and that wall is not gonna crumble and. And worse things are gonna happen, so I still believe it's in an unsafe condition, even with the condition that that they have done thus far.
Next one is eight eleven Wisconsin Avenue.
As well, so that we cite it as unsafe, so that I can move forward with the owner to take action on it.
So this one is.
Forty eight or eighty eight Minneapolis.
This one is four eighty eight Minneapolis, right, almost from the elementary.
So as long as. Those were mixed up. Item number two on your inspection says pit plywood cover is open. Or is that a well pit?
Uh, I didn't take the cover off to see how, what the well or what the pit was, uh, I just took my flashlight and poked it down there. To see that it was a pit, um.
In short period of time. That, yeah.
Yes, I agree. That's correct, so I will make that note to them to get that corrected.
Okay, so now what you need is.
Yes. Yes, that's correct, apologize about that. Okay.
Safe, but.
I'll second.
Who made seconded to. Claire forty forty eighty eight Minneapolis also. Unfit for habitation.
An unsafe building.
And further discussion?
And then on the, on the last one, then number four, um, is two thirteen Keller Avenue North, the old bakery in town here. Um, I've met the owner a few times on site, um, he's basically trying to, uh. Uh, clean up the the inside and clean up the place on the inside to make, bring it into a sellable condition, if you will. Um, and due to health concerns, he's not been able to do it in a very quick fashion kind of thing. So I gave him a deadline of, uh, September seventeenth, I believe I said, seventeenth to have it to that point where. It can be sold kind of thing, so giving him the summer. Uh, I think he was gonna get with some family members and friends to help do that kind of work and that kind of thing, so. Um, basically giving him to, uh, the the seventeenth of September to get it to the point where he can. Get it to sale, put it on the market, whatever his plan is to do there, um, to make it a usable space for the city. Um, is kind of the, one of my recommendation is there at this point.
Do you need any action from?
Just to give you an, uh, an update on where that's at.
Because we've, we've asked about it and. Like it to, like it to be able to, you know.
Yeah, maybe you can sell it and somebody will help him clean it, so.
Cool. Question on.
Yes.
All down and hit them. You inspected that at all?
I will take a closer look at that, I have not looked at the bolts and the securing points and those kinds of things, but I'll take a closer look at that. Uh, that's all I have for those compliance items, any questions for me with the annual report or the compliance issues?
To be true, I think we should call Glenn. The owner up there. You can put it up on top of the roof where. Sidewalk or. We get someplace for safe storage so you can. But that's, uh. The life and health.
Maybe that's.
I'd be up to Glenn, I.
Yep, yep, I'll take a look at it and then get with Jeff with what I see and we can make a decision on it. Okay, that's for sure. I can take action on that. All right, thank you.
Twenty twenty four CMA report.
Since our yearler of sewer plant and. They did, he got an A.
I I I struggled through as much as I could and understood. But when you see it's a four point O, I guess it's good. As, as we've said it before, that. Undevitably of the plant at this point is a tribute to the people who operated and maintain. It's appreciated. Washington's toilet should appreciate it. Okay.
Motion to approve resolutions zero nine dash twenty 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 four, the CMA may I report for the year. Second.
Motion's made and seconded to accept resolution oh nine twenty twenty four, the. CMA report for the year. They were say I?
To adjourn?
Seconded to adjourn at five. That's all right. City should appreciate a little bit.